Welcome, everyone. It's the seventh and final call of the meeting to order this survey meeting in the government body for a few days. At this time, I ask everyone, please rise to your nation's pride. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Here. 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 Also, we have our first, our lower attorney, Ted Senna. We have Superintendent Rockwell here for the scene, and I still have our board chair, Gallagher, also. Just an additional meeting with everybody for a video on December 27, 2017, eight-time place of community, the stacks of mail. We're all looking at this meeting, both of you are borough. Our first order of business is acknowledging, congratulating, and thanking Michael Patsox for his 33 years of service to the borough. Before I call my duck and say a few words, I ask my government body, please come off today to do my due. Yes. Again, first, we want to welcome everyone. Welcome, Mike. Welcome, Susan. Welcome, family. Let's be a fun part of the Patsox ass. But I welcome you here for this very special meeting. You know, how do you thank someone for dedicating 33 years of their life to the borough? Michael Patsox is, you know, in my eyes, an unsung hero. He served most of his career as a mechanic in the Department of Public Works. And I say unsung hero because the guys who cleared the snow and everyone does a wonderful job, they pick the garbage, they kudos all the time, but it's guys like Mike who makes all that happen, keeping all the equipment on the road, working crazy hours, right? My crazy hours, especially when we get those storms. And Mike's in the shop 20 hours plus at a time, keeping our equipment on the roads to make our residents safe for 33 years. Mike is a quiet individual who over 33 years came and did his job. Mike's personnel file is spotless, spotless. Again, Jesse was just dedicated to doing the right thing, and that was coming to the borough, selling the old and the shop and everything he did. So again, the bottom of all our hearts, thank you for 33 years of dedicated service. Before I call you, let us rock though if you would please come up and join me to discuss some of your motto. You did your super attendance here, you pulled out because of the storm, and the truth is it out. A lot of your colleagues were planning to be here, but now that they're through our minimum, they're going to stay. That all works out. Oh, no, they all wanted to be here. They're going to try to still make it, but I'm sure there'll be other celebrations in the future. Again, Mike, I ask you to please come up and just share your little bit of your own of your presentation. Now, I know Mike sometimes is a little bittersweet. I think, come here, he'll space for him. A little bittersweet because he can't be, he's hard of arts, he wanted to do a few more years. So wishing well in his endeavors going forward and the best health and great hardness for the rest of the next months. But before I present to Michael, behind every good man is a big one. And I'd like to invite Susie down now and present to you some flowers. I think Rockwell could attest that DPW really would be insane without Mike, you know, he was a picture of this over the years, he was a leader there. And as I said earlier, he was a quiet individual, but had a presence, and everyone so respected him, not only in the department, in every department in the borough and other areas as well. So Mike, I'm honored to be here tonight to recognize you. I'm going to present to you a few things. First, I'm going to present to Michael Patsox a plaque stating in grateful appreciation for the 33 years of dedicated service in the Department of Public Works, proudly presented its 15th day of the day 2018 by myself and the mayor and the entire government body. So first, that is for you. And around the corner. Again, I want two more presentations. The next one, I don't give it out lightly. There's only been a few residents, excuse me, staff members and a few residents under my seven or 10 years mayor who will receive the next presentation. I don't give it out easily because it's a special gift. And Mike, I proudly present to you the huge city. I also want to present you and Susie, who may have it to you over the years, I would help him, but this is a special 100th anniversary edition as we celebrate. That's a nice milestone, retiring on the 100th anniversary. Not that he worked it. But again, these are for you guys. Before I close, I'd like to open the floor. Rockwell as assistant, I'm going to say a few quick words. Yeah, I notice I say the word quick, Mike. Rockwell, quick.
Yeah, I will. When I kill a bird, Mike stood by my side, taught me many things, especially smoked my old number plate. So when I went on a trip, he was training me with Rock, where we could go and turn the trucks sideways. Okay, Mike, good. And then when we were doing the renovation of the new DPW building, he would work me out of coal garage by candlelight and burgers and water on the ground and electrical sockets and stuff. And Mike, he was getting shocked. You know, there are trucks, and he did, he goes, Rock, I'm like, I feel a tingle. Okay, get up off that. So when trucks would break down, number two, we had air hoses, nobody was around, everybody was out of burden. He said, Mike, I'll get on three, so we're on the roof, Rock, pull this one, pull that one. So you see two of us rolling around underneath the truck. But I enjoyed it, I learned a lot, I appreciated it. And then Mike became my blockhead's lunch partner. Every time Mike goes out, I'm blocking him off. Okay. But I'm going to miss him, I miss all what we went through, sadness, happiness, smiles, laughs, and I'm going to miss you dearly. So best of luck, health, life, and for the future of the people.
Jealous he's able to. I got their high school together, and I still probably got 15, 20 years left.
Hopefully, after I recover, I'm going to build a little something maybe in the same field, but not close to it. Awesome. That's my plan.
Speaking from experience.
That's my plan. He goes, go back to work, Mike.
Again, I thank everyone for being here. I thank our officers in the back too, as well. Mike, again, I'm proud to know you, you're a great man. Your dedication to the borough is unsurpassed, and I wish you and Susie both long future retirement, much health, get better on that issue, and nice reading positions, so enjoy your music. All right, proud of you, and thanks for everything. Well, thank you, five minutes of recess, I'm staying in check. I'm glad to have you. I'm glad to have you.
7:22, did we play with the set? It's on now? Maybe it was, I always want the plate in my head. No early exec, there's one non-agenda item, that's an appointment to the fire department of Vincent D. D'Alamo. I need a motion for early public comment for agenda items.
So moved.
All in favor? Anyone wishing to speak to an agenda item, please come on up. Seeing no one, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? Reports, Bree, do you have anything for us?
Tonight's late night voter registration.
Okay.
It's also open until 9:00 PM.
Until 9:00 PM? Thank you. Fred, anything for us?
No, mayor, thank you.
Counsel, any council member?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a few spots opened at the garden, and a couple people pull out personal issues, so we have a couple spots left. I'll post it on Facebook tomorrow.
And then they'll be gone quite quickly, I would imagine, from that. Good. Anyone else? Just a couple things. The borough damage from the car accident, as I stayed at the last meeting, will be processed through our insurance. I'm just waiting on the Mason repair, but the Mason couldn't give me an estimate until the flagpole company determines if they have to disturb more concrete for the new flagpole. So I'm hoping by the end of the week that's resolved, and we can submit, and within the next two weeks, hopefully get moving on that.
Do we keep the old sign for?
The old signs, I just kept it for insurance to inspect, and they've been here already, so I haven't discarded anything. So, I mean, the sign itself was shot, I think even one of the LED panels was shot. If one is functional, if anyone wants it, they can have it, you know.
Keep that for a spare?
I was going to just say keep the one in case something went wrong. Yeah, I mean...
Because it really does no good unless you have the controller to program.
Right, but those you can get easily in the software I already have, so we'll talk about it. Let me get everything back in shape, and then we can see what we're going to do going forward. Cleanup Day this past Saturday, weather considering was a great success, had over 200 participants. Well-attended Cleanup Day. Reminder, 5/28 Memorial Day, it's different because Sloan Park is closed. We'll be gathering at the Senior Center parking lot, exiting there, going down Hamburg Turnpike to Main Street Butler to Butler Park. That'll be this year's parade, yes?
A couple people have asked which side of the senior?
The parking lot.
The senior parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the advertising says senior parking lot.
Okay.
We'll direct that morning.
Okay.
Reminder, I have a mental illness first aid class for anyone who deals with youth, 9:00 AM on the 9th and the 16th, they're four hour, eight hours total, four hour each. This will get you certified in mental health illness for youth. I have about 15 people registered to date, a lot of teachers and some coaches and things. So if anyone's interested, it's a quite interesting program at the Senior Center. I have Leary Ave pre-construction meeting tomorrow at 10:00 AM, so we can hopefully get that project working in the next few weeks. The cell tower, as you know, we're extending our lease, we have to bid it though, so that should be hopefully concluded shortly, we can advertise and get that going. I just sent you an email on that. I saw the lease for the bid, but just some questions I had in there, so just take a look and hopefully we can get that by the end of the week. And one other thing, I don't think I mentioned this, and just to the council, in case anyone asks you, we all know the county got federal money and did that friction, anti-friction process on Glenwild Ave, where it was notorious for slipping and sliding on the curves, and you can see it's all coming up, and, well, not all, but some sections. So I met last week, and again this week, with the DOT, the feds, and the county to see what they're doing about it, and they don't know yet. The contractor's saying it wasn't his era, and he's thinking it was the under, the surface that he applied it to wasn't the right spec. The county disagrees, so now they're pulling material to get the spec, and it's just ridiculous. You know, it's just the kind of stuff that just makes government look bad because they had a beautiful paved two-year-old road and went and disturbed it. Why, I can't figure it, apparently statistically, the friction works, but it failed here. And interestingly enough, you know, they pretty much said it only happened here. Well, I was driving from Greenwood Lake on Mother's Day down Ringwood Ave, and it's there too, even worse than here. So apparently it failed in more than one area. So in case residents ask, it's a county project, I think most residents know, because many were not happy about it in the first place, but just so you know that the county says they're going to fix it, just, I think they're going to do a mill and pave, quick fix to get rid of the pothole, and then till they can resolve this friction issue with the contractor, that could take some time. So just a general update on that for everyone. Okay, item 10, resolution under the consent agenda, 5.15 through 5.26. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Just any discussion, the one thing I wanted to point, I'm proud to be appointing tonight full-time construction office assistant Kathy Lime, and I raise that, usually I don't pull off the consent because Dan Hagberg's here, our construction code officer, and anytime I have the opportunity, I want to thank Dan for the amazing amount of time and effort you put into what you do, because it kind of blows me away that you get it done with all these towns we do. No cake, no cake. I know, Dan's, no, I didn't know you were coming. Dan's like, no eating, no meeting, usually, but, sorry, Dan. But because Dan's here, I wanted to just point that out, we have some retirements coming up within 12 months, and we need to plan for the future, and at Dan's recommendation from working with the individual, it's going to be a nice fit for the department. So I thank you for helping this happen and continue training that individual, so that's the one thing I wanted to point out there. Any other comment on the consent? If not, can I have a motion?
Just DPW labor that...
DPW labor is replacing our retiring...
He was one of the prior applicants?
He was the fourth candidate in our prior round of applications, correct. And the other is a promotion, as you recall, our mechanic retired, we promoted a mechanic at our last meeting, now we're promoting a sanitation backman to a driver, and then summer help. Okay? Have a motion to approve. Should I have it? I'm sorry. Just moving too fast here. Any further comment? And can I have a roll call on this, please?
Kosta?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
Felrica?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Fonda Meyer?
Yes.
Datsy?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Item 11, second final reading and public hearing on bond ordinance 15, 2018, our utility bond ordinance. Can I have a public notice statement, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and properties were made available to the public so that a motion may be read, maybe made that it be read by...
And who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Let's read the title first.
Okay.
Bond ordinance providing for various 2018 water utility acquisitions and improvements by and in the borough of Bloomingdale and the counties of the state of New Jersey appropriating 525,600 therefore and authorizing the issuance of 525,600 bond or notes to finance the cost of...
Thank you. And Councilman Casa, any questions, wait for the motion to adopt and the discussion portion of that. At this time, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, 15, 2018. Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
And who moves to adopt?
So moved.
And now, any discussion? Councilman?
Is this include, is the inclusion of the backhoe still on this?
Yes. In this bond ordinance, we have 75,000 for curb box work for Red Twig Trail, that's our guys doing it with labor and the rental of a machine in that 75,000, which would not be needed if we purchased, I'll get to that in a moment. 120,000 for the purchase of new meters, this is our five-year plan, every year buying a fifth of our meter for the borough. 70,600 is a purchase of a bucket for a backhoe, a dump trailer, transfer switch for the generator, so we can put a portable generator at the utility office, and the backhoe you're referencing, it's like $46,000. And then, wait, hold on, and then the booster station for the water conversion from Butler. Now, I'm sorry, did you have a specific question?
Yes. Can they get around performing the job that's at hand without purchasing a new backhoe?
Okay. Let me just back up before I answer that question. As I stayed at the last meeting, because I didn't have a definitive direction from the governing body, by us adopting this, okay, does not, doesn't even authorize, it authorizes new debt. But finance does not borrow that money unless needed. We only borrow money when we do a note sale, and we have just rolling cash flow from other prior notes and bonds, and usually finance does, you know, bond sale once a year. So no interest is paid, so if we do nothing, and that money just sits there, no interest is paid on it because we haven't borrowed money on it, okay? If we decide 100% we're not moving forward, then we can just cancel that, so it never becomes debt to the borough, and money's never borrowed against it. And the reason I ask you to proceed that way is I don't, still don't have a real definitive answer. Matter of fact, our utility foreman asked me to come tonight, and I didn't think it was necessary, tonight, I said, let me get the ordinance on the books, and you could talk to each individual person. I support the backhoe. Now, your question was, can they work without it? When we did the, when we saved 75 to 100,000 on Knoll's Road, on Raffkin Road, our guys doing the curb boxes, our department used the contractor's equipment, so we were, we had two pieces of equipment on that job. The recommendation from our utility foreman is that having this piece of equipment would just expedite and move that Red Twig Trail project along. The Red Twig Trail project with our guys doing the curb boxes is going to save in excess of $80,000. So my position is that that one job pays for this backhoe. If we don't purchase it, and that's a discretion of the governing body, they will rent a machine, that's $15,000. So 15,000 in this 75,000 for Red Twig is a rental of equipment. They buy it, and that goes away too. So I know, councilpeople I've spoken to, some feel it's not needed, because we have the old one, that could be used in a yard to move dirt and salt in the winter and things, and they can, the utility can take the one newer backhoe. You know, I think the investment will allow our guys to do more, don't just relate it to Red Twig, other jobs down the road. I would ask that everyone individually speak to the utility individual. I want you to know upfront, I support this, so if it comes down to a tie, I will vote yes to purchase this backhoe, because I believe, like, the investment we've made into the utility already comes back in rewards twofold in what we're investing in the borough. So your decision tonight is not authorizing to buy it. As I said at the last meeting, I will not authorize a purchase order for the purchase of it until I know there's a vote from the governing body that supported it. And if it fails, then we cancel that portion of the capital and move on. The issue of me putting it in was I didn't have a definitive answer at our last meeting, and I needed to get this bond in place for Red Twig, for the transfer station and all the other items in. So I'd ask you, because only the utility operator can give us the best answer, and right now, I know there's councilpeople who are against it, and some who are for it. So, yeah, please.
Just so people can digest, this is just my personal opinion, we should not be leasing anything.
Renting.
We should not be renting or leasing any machines to do this job. We have a backhoe to do this job, it has three different buckets that we bought, all ready to do smaller work, the new one's sitting down here. I did talk to Frank a couple times, I talked to Al, I talked to other, another town on how they do things to get a different of opinion of this whole thing, because I am not the expert in this. Frank did say they borrowed the equipment from the previous contractor on...
Raffkin.
A Raffkin area.
Raffkin.
Raffkin, all right? And they did save us some money. But we do have a bucket that can do the exact same work that they want to do. I support the other stuff you want to buy, because we need that equipment to do this work, the dump trailer, to get stuff back and forth, which I've supported dump trailer for probably two or three years, and that, that they said they couldn't use, but now we have one in there to use. We went through this whole process to have a company come in and tell us how we can manage our time and our equipment better. We spent X amount of thousands of dollars, they haven't come in to talk to us about that, and the biggest part of that was sharing equipment. So in my opinion, we have the equipment, that backhoe can go up there anytime they want to use it, if they communicate together and schedule things to be done, the old backhoe is old, there's no doubt about it. It's not roadworthy, I agree with that. They are now using it, and I saw it, they use to pick up stone, move it into truck, they use the old backhoe, I was told it wouldn't start. I went down, turned the gate, started right up. Okay, so I went there. The two arms on it that hold the bucket in front, there's a cracked IV or support that keeps them separated equally, that needs, in my opinion, to be welded. Our mechanic is not comfortable doing that, maybe he just has the expertise to get it right, even though he can weld, or doesn't want that responsibility, so we go out, spend $400 or $500, have a certified welder come in and put an IV beam in there to keep it separated right, so we can pick it up. There's nothing wrong with that machine. I like the idea of having the money there, because when that machine does go, it might be this year, next year, and the year after, because we, this machine that we have, the new one, is not new anymore, it's two years old?
Correct.
Approximately? And we were told back then, this machine's not going to last. Three years later, it's still here, it's running, it's still doing, it has a use. Otherwise, we should be getting rid of it to begin with, we shouldn't even have it in New York. So in my opinion, we have the equipment to save the money without spending a dime on new equipment or leasing equipment, and that's a real big savings overall. And the other questions I have, and I'm not 100% sure, because I've been thinking about this since, actually, took this kind of serious, because I've been down to DPW quite a bit, is when they did this other project, some of it was done on overtime, right? Are those salaries paid in the salary line, or does that come out of the borrowing money also?
In the 75,000.
It does come out of the borrowing money.
35,000 of the 75 is for salary and wages for Red Twig.
Okay, so we're not using the regular, okay, that was just my...
Correct. And it's still a net savings of about 80,000 by having, but not, by not having the contractor do it, our guys doing it.
May I interject to you?
Just one, just one second. And Mike, looking at the whole picture, we have three guys in our work department to do this project, and yes, they can pull a DPW guy or two in to help out, whatever. Two guys have the expertise, one guy is learning, right? So I just don't think we have to buy another piece of equipment, two people go and run it, and how many are actually operating it?
I want to ask you the question, I'm sorry, Don, you ask your question first.
It's not a question. I've also, I also spoke with the utility foreman and asked a lot of questions, and one of the ones that, one of the things that he mentioned was the machine, the one that's a few years old, is a tad on the large side for the boxes, to switch out the boxes, and I asked him, well, and we have interchangeable parts, and I said, well, don't they make smaller buckets and things that you can put on the larger machine? And he said, I really don't know. So I said, well, before we make a decision, I would like to know, can we purchase the smaller size buckets for the larger machine to make it more work? He said, we have them, but they're still a little on the large side. So I said, can you purchase the smaller ones that go with the larger machine to make it more workable for the curb boxes? He said he's going to, he said he didn't know, and he's going to look into it. That's number one. Number two, one of my concerns with the much older machine is I just want to make sure that that's safe. As long as that's a safe machine for the guys to be using, then I'm more comfortable, I think, running it into the ground, and...
That was always...
As long as it's safe, and I need, I would like to know that from the mechanic, then I think I would be more comfortable waiting to purchase a backhoe, as long as it's workable for them. If they can't purchase smaller bucket, you know, interchangeable pieces, and it's not going to work, then maybe we do need to buy it. So when the utility foreman gets back to me with his answers, then I'll have a better idea of how I would want to vote on it.
Yeah, I have three things, and...
One more thing. The other thing that I did is I walked Red Twig. 90% of the water boxes are between the grass and the curb. I mean, the grass and the sidewalk, they're in...
Between the curb and the sidewalk.
The curb and the sidewalk, that's where you are, 90% of them.
Right.
All the way down, even the other side where there's no sidewalk, they're only a foot off the curb. So any machine can get them from a road.
Well, plus the sidewalks are coming up.
Well, that's the other issue, is that we're ripping sidewalks out, the ones that have to be, so they're going to be disturbed anyway. So it really doesn't matter the size, because you're going to dig it no matter what.
I think in all fairness, here's what we should do. I have three things. Number one, if the old machine was defunct and don't, didn't, wasn't here, do you support buying this machine?
Yes.
Okay. We all were here when we bought the new machine, so the absolute opinion at the time was the old one was 20 years old, it's on its last leg, let's keep it though till it dies, and invest no money into it. I don't know if you go weld it for $500, I'll determine that. And that was the consensus of the governing body, don't put any money into it, let's keep it till it dies. So thirdly, what I'd like to do then, because we have time, because Red Twig's not starting for quite some time, probably fall, by the time we design it, bid it, and do all that good stuff. I'm going to invite the foreman in our next meeting, do an early presentation at 7:00 PM, gather all your questions, ask him...
I don't want Frankie here.
Why?
I want his boss here.
Well, we'll have them both here.
And I want Rock, I want the people that are running that department to answer the questions.
Well, again, Rock...
I know Frankie's the expert in it, I know that, but the person running the department...
But John, you know Frankie has to be here, correct?
I'm not saying, that boss should be here.
Right, okay, that's fine, I'll have them both here. But do you, you know Frankie's going to answer all the questions?
No.
Okay, just be real.
Well, it might be being a little, but if it's a guy...
I'm just, just trying, like, okay, I'm just being polite, yes, sir?
If both of these, these backhoes right now reside at the DPW, and both are being used by the DPW, why are we gonna replace it when we ask the utility players pay for a machine that the entire town's gonna be utilizing, picking up salt, whatever the case may be?
Well, no, 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 that wouldn't, this, this is a smaller machine, this is not the full-size backhoe.
So DPW will never use it?
Well, again, I can't ever say never. Obviously, they could share equipment, that's the whole point of John said earlier. But will, if I had to put percentages on it, it would be 90% utility, 10% DPW, because DPW uses the big ones to load salt, mulch, topsoil, you know, they're...
Didn't we buy the big one with utility funds also?
Yes, but that was since rectified because there was issues with it, so that was ended up being, I believe it was 50/50, they ended up...
I don't know.
Ready to recall? I know we settled that, because it was being used by DPW.
I know.
So, let me do that, again, have them in, spend 20 minutes, ask the questions, just so we can all hear it at one time, rather than having visits one-on-one, and go from there, whatever you decide to do. But I want you to know, I support it, and if there is a tie, I will support buying the machine, just so you know.
Well, John, the biggest thing is the sharing of the equipment...
Yeah.
And I always feel that that's going on as well as it should be.
Well, that's, I...
That was going on a lot of the thing, a lot of the times, you know, they're asking for stuff just for utility, well, a lot...
Well, no, I disagree with you, because every time there's a water main break, what vehicles you think are there, running dirt and stone? DPW vehicles?
Yeah.
So they do share vehicles, they do share equipment.
But the point, we don't do a big amount of it.
In share, what else could be shared, other than this backhoe example?
Just this backhoe.
Right, exactly, I just wanna clarify that. All right, there's a motion on the table, again, no decision has to be made, because we have time.
And not this has anything to do with buying equipment, but we have time now, we know we're gonna, we're gonna do that project, we should be starting that project on that side of it now.
Well, I can't tell the funding is in place for the curb boxes.
I'm just...
So we adopt tonight, 20 days from now, funds are available.
Right.
And then he can order his meters for that project, his curb boxes for this project. Well, absolutely, that'll happen, yeah, like it did on the other projects. Thank you. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call on that adoption?
Mono?
Yes.
Delarca?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sondemire?
Yes.
Dazzy?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
9:00 AM, order backup, okay. New business, item 12.
I think we signed it back.
Right. I need 5.27, payment of the bills, who makes that motion?
So moved.
Right.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delarca?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Sondemire?
Yes.
Dazzy?
Yes.
Costa?
Yes.
Tomato?
Yes.
I need 18, 5.28, authorizing land surveying services with DMC for Red Twig Trail in the amount of $8,200, who makes that motion?
So moved.[1648.24]